I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council Public Finance Authority to order. Please note that Councilman Burns has submitted a notice of absence for tonight's meeting pursuant to Resolution Number 2001-54. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Calmick?
Here.
Councilmember Mosher?
Here.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
Mayor Strickland?
Here.
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Bolton?
Here.
All present.
So, three-minute comments from councilmembers. Does any councilmember want to do a three-minute speech?
I do.
Wait, councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to recognize the start of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which is observed annually according to federal law from September 15th to October 15th of every year. Our national celebration of Hispanic heritage was originally one week long. The president who authorized making it one month long described the observance as "recognition of the Hispanic individuals, families, and communities that enrich our national life." I call upon the people of the United States, especially the educational community, to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Similar sentiments were more recently echoed. This month, we recognize the countless contributions of Hispanic Americans that make our nation a thriving and secure land of opportunity. That first quote was from President Ronald Reagan, and the second one was from President Donald Trump. In Huntington Beach, I have heard increasing instances of people questioning why we have to single out certain people for special treatment. I'm saddened when I hear that type of sentiment. I would hope that each person has something in their background or their family life that is a source of positivity and joy and that they want to share with others, because this is all part of being an American. I think most people understand why we celebrate Labor Day, to celebrate the American worker, and most people understand why we celebrate Veterans Day. When people celebrate St. Patrick's Day, I do not hear any hostility toward people who identify as Irish-American for wanting to have parades or have parties. I have never heard anyone say that we shouldn't recognize that day because recognition of Irish or Catholic people somehow diminishes the non-Irish or non-Catholic people in our society. Instead, there's a saying, "Everyone is a little bit Irish on St. Patrick's Day." Everybody who wants to seems to join in, and it appears to be a great excuse and the only excuse for drinking green beer. A similar thing is happening with Cinco de Mayo and Mardi Gras, even if people don't actually know what the day commemorates. It seems to be a great reason for gatherings and fun and just maybe learning a little bit about why the day is celebrated. The same could be true of Women's History Month, Black History Month, and Pride Month. People coming together to understand what these heritages mean to these people that have them and what it means to our melting pot of a country. I look forward to a time when all people can come together, including and perhaps especially the people who do not understand why America celebrates the different experiences that all make our country great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you very much. So, it was a really busy weekend in Huntington Beach. I was fortunate to get to attend the Active Living Expo, which was held at the Senior Center. I just wanted to give a shout-out and appreciation to the Huntington Beach Council on Aging Board and volunteers, as well as the Senior Center volunteers, as well as the vendors who were there. It was a very well-attended event, and I think it's just great that we're able to provide those resources to our seniors so that they are able to age with dignity in Huntington Beach and really get connected to all of those resources that exist. Second, I had the great pleasure of attending the Blessing of the Waves from the Greater Huntington Beach Interfaith Council on Sunday evening. I have never gone to one where they had it in the evening, only in the morning, and I have to say that it was stellar. It was so well-attended. First, they had music by Lifeguard Band Crew 52, which was really awesome. And then, the drummers that normally come there on Sundays actually kind of just waited until the event was over. It was great. Then, they celebrated with their drumming afterwards. But it was just really beautiful in that there were so many different faith groups represented, including this time Jackie Nunez, who was from the Hashemun tribe. I know I didn't do that properly, but she was amazing and ended up blessing the waves with sage. And it was just really a beautiful event. So, if you didn't get to go this year, I encourage you to go next year. And then, the last thing that I wanted to mention that I was able to attend this weekend was a great day in the Stoke. It was the second year that it was held in Huntington Beach, and I actually just wanted to briefly read, it was actually a social media post by a young man, by his mom, who he participated in the event. And I think it really kind of just talks about the whole thing all in itself in lieu of me just doing it. So, it says, "Proud Mom Moment: Ace Participated in the Beginner's Competition at a Great Day in the Stoke Yesterday. He started learning how to surf in July of 2023 and has been hooked ever since. He loves the ocean, the waves, and the thrill of riding them. I love the amazing community of Black surfers who have welcomed him and supported him in this journey. He has made new friends, learned new skills, and gained confidence and joy. He was so excited to be part of this event, which celebrates the diversity and inclusion of Black surfers. The event was held at the Huntington Beach Pier, where just a few months ago, the U.S. Open of Surfing was hosted, and where professional surfers from around the world competed. I am grateful for this opportunity, for him to see surfers who look like him and inspire him to pursue his passion. Thank you to Nathan Fleweller and everyone who organized this event and made it possible. You are making a difference in the lives of many young Black surfers like Ace. You are creating a positive and fun experience for them and introducing others to the sport of surfing. You are fostering a culture of trust, cooperation, and respect among surfers of all backgrounds. You are making surfing more accessible, diverse, and inclusive. You are making history. Thank you for a great day in the Stoke." And I just wanted to thank Nathan Fleweller, Don Ramsey, Kenny Bennett, so many people from throughout the community. Rocky McKinnon was teaching surfing lessons as well. It just really showed how everybody can come together to really make Huntington Beach such a welcoming, diverse, and inclusive place. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to say that this weekend, I attended the opening of Oktoberfest at Old World. It was an event put on by the Kiwanis. It was unbelievably well-attended. I had the opportunity and the good fortune to keep the tradition of the mayor cracking the first keg. And Oktoberfest is going on right now at Old World, and I encourage all the Huntington Beach residents to attend. It's a great event, and it was just an honor and privilege to be there over the weekend. So, with that, going down, city clerk, do we have any supplemental communications at this time?
For study session, item number three, we received three email communications regarding the Mobility Implementation Plan, HB in Motion survey results. For closed session, item number three, a memo was received from our interim Director of Human Resources, Teresa St. Peter, providing a correction to the spelling of the claimant's name, and that's it for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have anybody signed up at this portion to speak?
We do have one individual, Steve Shepherd. Could you come on down?
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a number of prepared remarks today, and all that changed in less than three miles it took me to get here. You all got my email. You got my little plan today, and all that swelled. We sit around, we talk about the data points. I sit in Public Works Commission meetings, and we talk about projects. About halfway here, I came upon an older gentleman being put into an ambulance. Two HPPD units at the corner of Atlanta and Newland, helping this gentleman up, bandaging his head, and I'm assuming off to the hospital. There was no bike. There was no car. I'm assuming he either took a header or somebody kind of clipped him in the intersection. But I was here to remind you guys, these are not data points. This is not about lycra-clad Tour de France racers. This is not about fearless bike commuters. This is about our kids. This is about the elderly. This is about moms sprinting across arterials, pushing strollers to get to the playground. I've heard a lot in this council chamber about protecting our children. There is a clear and present danger on our streets right now. In addition to the elderly gentleman that I saw, HPPD helping scrape up off the street, I passed four different K through 12 schools. This is the fourth iteration of the city council that I've advocated for on this point. I've talked to the city manager. I've talked to past city managers. I know there are recommendations. I know there are recommendations that consultants are telling us, "These are the things we can do." It's not enough. It simply is not enough. We have an excessive speed problem, and we have a safety problem for our residents. I ask you to consider those things when you are thinking about this survey. All right? That was what I was here to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Shepherd.
My name's Rando Costello. Hello, Huntington Beach City Council. Hello, Huntington Beach. Not sure who these people are. I have a couple of things. Man, what is up with the Masonic Illuminati Lodge Museum right down the street? Been here for what, since 1958? Y'all heard of Masonic people and Illuminati? Nobody? A museum? I went in there. I went in there. What do you think? Have you been in there? I really don't even want to talk to you people. I don't care who you are. I already know. I saw some guy talking to city council, and he let go. Can you cuss in here? You can't cuss. Best thing is, none of you can say anything because you made some paperbag rule. Man, are you guys good. Now, you got some AT&amp;T thing going on, or T-Mobile, or something? Yeah, T-Mobile just took some money out of my account before it was due. Man, who's the, why, who is they talking about hanging out with Nazis? Was that you, young lady? It was one of you ladies. Look at the stares you give. Man, that's why next time I come here and talk, I'm going to talk to these people, not you. You'll be lucky to hear it. Hello, ma'am. Michael and Al and... Man, I still got a minute. Who, how do I get some res... Do you send me a letter of any of the questions I ask? Do they send a letter? No, you don't. You don't respond to anything that anyone says here? That's why you got to go. And I don't know any of you or what you do, but if you listen to these people and do not respond to it in some way, a text, an email, or official paper that y'all have, and don't interrupt me at 10 seconds. I'm done. I'll be back, though. I hope I'm not like...
Thank you for being here. Thank you so much.
Don't thank me. It's my job.
Thank you. So, city clerk, we're done with the speakers at this point.
Yes, that concludes public comments.
And then, members going down, we have a staff report. Staff, please introduce your presentation at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. This is an update on the Huntington Beach Mobility Implementation Plan, HB in Motion. We want to provide you an update on the survey that we've received so far. So, on the agenda, we want to provide some of the feedback we've received from Survey Number One, as well as Number Two. We want to discuss improvements related to bicycle recommendations, pedestrian recommendations, the beach path recommendation, as well as e-bike education enforcement efforts that's happening currently with the city. Our project goals tonight is to not only improve the citywide bike and pedestrian network, but also safety for all users. We want to improve comfort and design for the beach path as well. We want to build upon the city's long-term mobility pedestrian plan, transportation plan, and bicycle plan. It is a balancing act when it comes to mobility. We have to leverage everything related to residents, visitors, emergency services, as well as motorists who drive in the city. We want to identify a strategy, as well as system improvements to facilitate a balanced and equitable transportation system. This document is prepared so that we can leverage funding when it comes to grant opportunities, local level, county level, as well as the state and federal level. We know that e-bikes are here. They're coming, and they're here, and we need to prepare for infrastructure, not only for e-bikes, but there's scooters, motorized skateboards, and micro-mobility devices. And even right now, new devices are being introduced regularly. So, the project timeline, we have a website set up, hbmobility.com. It started back in May 2022, and it's still live right now. We have the survey that was done back in February 2022 and lasted for six months. We briefed council at that time on results of Survey Number One, where we basically asked the residents, "What do you want? What is the problem? What should we address in terms of mobility?" And they gave it to us. So, in the public meeting, we had a briefing with residents as well. It was a virtual meeting, and we had 36 people. We had Survey Number Two, which was released on May 2023 and is live right now. We presented draft recommendations to them. We asked them, "What do you prefer?" We gave them examples of infrastructure that was out there existing throughout the city. We asked them, "What do you want? What don't you like?" as well. And so, we're here today to brief you on those draft recommendations that we heard from Survey Number Two. We plan on having another public meeting to share those draft recommendations with the public in fall of 2023. So, this is a measured approach to get feedback from the public, to develop our plan, make sure that it's been vetted by the public, and that we have their blessing. Subsequent to this, staff will prepare a draft mobility plan for comments. Now, I'm going to go over some of results from Survey Number Phase One, just to recap. In Phase One, the first survey, we received 860 responses. 93% live in Huntington Beach, and we heard the residents tell us, "No e-bikes," "Yes to e-bikes," "Separate the e-bikes," "People are riding too fast," "Slow them down," "More enforcement, more education." And we got the message. We got that every, we know that everyone drives in Huntington Beach. We get that. But we want to continue to maintain the same level of service and also improve safety for all users. The other element we got from the survey is that the secondary mode of transportation they cited was biking and walking. So, that's something the community has wanted, and they want that planned for in the future as well. Go ahead, Joe.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Yakabuchi. I'm the project manager from the consulting team supporting Chow and her staff on this project. I'm going to go into some of the technical analysis that is accompanying this. I also want to point out, too, that we shared this slide also about a year ago, too, so this is just a refresher for you. But we identified, you know, from the technical analysis, that Huntington Beach is a family-friendly-focused community, and a lot of the areas that they're, walking and biking, especially on side streets, is very safe. At the same time, though, that safety breaks down when you get to most arterials, which are, you know, primarily do have bike facilities on them currently. As a baseline for safety, it could be much enhanced, and that's really what we wanted to identify here. We also understood, too, and Chow alluded to this in the survey results, that the primary mode of getting around Huntington Beach is by car, but there's a potential good way to sort of balance that and create additional safety enhancements for pedestrians and bicyclists while not diminishing the experience of somebody that's driving, which is a key factor. Next slide. So, we did a Phase Two survey. As Chow had mentioned, we launched this in May, and this is just a little bit of background. We've been promoting the survey. Whoever wants to promote it for us, we've been taking advantage of that around there, and we already have over, this is a little bit outdated, but we already, I think we have close to 600 respondents right now. We anticipate getting close to 800 to match the Phase One survey, and we'll have this out after our public meeting as well and using the public meeting to promote this. The one thing that this slide shows, though, is that there is good representation for all age groups on this, which is important because you don't want something that's just solely focused on particular age groups. And so, as far as promoting this to seniors or school-aged children, we have done that, and we take every opportunity to do that in the future. Excellent. And so, some of the initial results, and again, the survey's still open, but we wanted to share this, you know, kind of in progress here. You know, we asked a couple of questions about walking and e-bike, and one of the highlights here is that we identified, there's been a very strong response for a positive sentiment towards the separated beach path alignment that's similar to what was just implemented less than a year ago between Seapoint and 11th Street. People like that separation, so you don't have to worry about if you're on a bike going around pedestrians. If you're a pedestrian, you have to worry about a bike trying to meander through there. There's, in addition to that, crosswalks is also, has a lot of support, too. People want areas where they can cross into the beach and understand that there's going to be the markings for that, in addition to slow zones in areas that have a lot of potential conflicts, where those conflicts are there. There's also strong or moderate support for feedback signs, as currently appears on 11th. It's just a nice indication for people. If you're riding your bike, sometimes you don't know how fast you're going. This just gives you the immediate reinforcement that maybe I'm going too fast or I'm right on track. There's also some support for 10 mile per hour speed limit or just at least the opportunity to identify that. For on-street facilities, we identified different types, as Chow had mentioned, of facilities, and some of these here are on the right-hand side, and there is strong preference for what we call separated bike lanes, and these are, have some kind of separation, either physical or even stripe separation, and that appear on current streets like Delaware, parking lane, protected bike lane on Springdale, or buffer bike lane on Algonquin. And that was somewhat intuitive that we got the response that people prefer those types of facilities because they do offer a little bit more protection. And also, for, if you're in automobile, too, there's a nice demarcation, physical demarcation, to identify where the vehicles go over, where the cyclists go. Both modes of travel benefit from that type of treatment. And then, we identified the top three treatment type. People wanted more robust, so they wanted to see things like planters that also provided beautification or greening elements to the streets as well. But just, this was a lot intuitive. It was good that this kind of was interpreted this way. We appreciated the feedback for this. Excellent. And so, then we also asked questions regarding the perceptions of e-bikes, and obviously, this is a much-discussed issue in a lot of communities, but especially in Huntington Beach. And what we found was on the roadways, it was, the key takeaway is about 46% of people find e-bikes to be an issue. About 33% identified that they weren't an issue, and the remainder being that they didn't really have a strong opinion either way. What's interesting about this, when you get to the beach path, you could see that the percentage of people finding that e-bikes are an issue on the beach path has gone up, and I think that's just because that there's the potential for more conflicts. Next slide. We also asked people to indicate where improvements are most needed in HB, and there's two primary areas kind of edging off the beach and downtown on the west side of the city, in the south part, and also in Huntington Harbor area. And we just identified this, and these largely match, I think, you know, as far as the general interest of people wanting to see enhanced facilities. Excellent. And then, we've done a lot of observations on the streets, and Trevor here, who's on the team, sitting two over here, is a HB resident, so we have people on the ground that are in the city here. But we've also, under the leadership of Chow and her team, have made sure that we've gotten out there, and we've done several observations, so that it matches the technical analysis to make sure that we're observing this, and which you could see is a variety of things. Families biking, older couples on e-bikes, things you wouldn't necessarily be, you wouldn't necessarily expect. A very crowded beach path at a lot of times, especially in that central area, and then, you know, pedestrian and bicyclists, scooter conflicts on the beach path as well. And so, with all this in mind, this just kind of sets us up. Want to discuss some of the preliminary recommendations, and as Chow mentioned, our next step is to go to a public meeting and basically ask the community about this. So, we want to just preview this with the council today for discussion. So, first, we'll go over the bicycle recommendations, and the approach that we're taking here, it's, again, we're just trying to achieve balance here. So, we have what's called a toolkit, where we have, you know, different treatments in that toolkit that can be applied to certain streets. This is a very smart, context-sensitive approach to identify that, you know, for a certain street, that robust improvements might not necessarily be adequate for that, or another street that might have extra space where we can provide additional improvements. Next slide. So, you can see here, this is a wide variety, and the idea is to get this toolkit, you know, basically get this identified with the community so they understand. And we've taken, you know, with the exception of the median refuge islands, all of these facilities actually currently exist in HB. So, we're not talking about something that is novel or is completely, we wanted to identify familiarity to. So, what we call near-term or low-hanging fruit, you know, versus a phasing, you know, transformative, and all transformative actually really means is more capital-intensive, so I just want to put that out there. So, you know, more lighter touch, you know, more affordable aspects is like buffered bike lanes or leading pedestrian intervals. Leading pedestrian intervals give you, give the pedestrian or cyclist a couple seconds head start before traffic, so they're more visible, so they reduce conflicts that way. Mid-block flashers, these are areas, you know, in some places in Huntington Beach, you have to walk, you know, 15 minutes actually to get to the closest crossing, which diminishes the appetite for somebody to actually make a crossing. So, these could be put in places in between those signalized crosswalks. Separated bike lane, it is just what it says, but Springdale's a great example of that, where there's a parking-protected facility. And then, we, again, the beach path, we have the new separated facility for space for pedestrians versus cyclists. And then, finally, a median refuge island, which are pretty prominent, you know, all over the world as a place, but with a lot of medians here, there could be the opportunity to actually shorten that crossing distance, especially for the elderly or somebody with disabilities that takes a longer time to cross the street. The refuge island is really important for those subcategories. So, all this with account, what we did is we established what the existing network here is on the left, and so, the first thing I want to point out, on the left, it's a faint green line, but basically, every arterial has a bike facility on there. So, we already have the baseline of a safe facility on each street. That being said, the darker blue lines indicate where we actually have more robust facilities, and facilities that just about everybody feels comfortable on. And so, what we want to do is, we want to build out some of those more robust facilities throughout the city. And what we identified in the Phase One, based on those factors that I already went over, including the mapping that we did, is we've established what is a base network that will use that toolkit. So, again, a wide variety of different improvements can be implemented on each of these corridors. It's not a one-size-fits-all improvements that are going to be on the president of all these streets, but it'll be context-sensitive. Where we have space, we could put a buffer, for instance. And then, on the Phase Two, that's basically just establishing what a potential network will look like in the future. So, each of these corridors will be looked at individually, whether it's going for grant funding to help with capital costs, or it's part of a repaving program. Each of these streets will be looked at individually, and those types of improvements we identified specifically at a later date. This is just kind of identifying the overall network approach and to identify that there is the importance of a network. I'm sure everybody has been on a bike facility at one time that just abruptly ends, and that's what we want to try to get away from. that's what we want to try to get away from here, is to identify that there's a place to get around HB on every mode, you know, safely throughout the city. So that's what this represents. And then, just going off to the pedestrian recommendations, I'll just highlight this. There is a multitude of factors. I'm not going to get into each one of these individually, but we did take a technical approach to identifying, including crashes, including transit or population density in destinations, and even looking at vulnerable populations. Next slide. So we've identified this three-phase pedestrian corridors here, including these streets here. And again, similar to what we identified in the bike program, we just wanted to identify an area where pedestrians can get around the city and enhance safety for pedestrians while not diminishing the usability for any users. And then with that, we'll end off the beach path recommendations. We spent a lot of time on this, and we, again, did a lot of observations and field visits. We monitored the new path separation as well. And again, you know, just to get down to, we have a toolbox of improvements here, if you go to the next slide, where we looked at everything for rumble strips, which could either be just visual indicators, or they could actually be physical cues there as well, speed feedback signs, conflict markings. A lot of these things are already on the beach path as today, so I don't want to go necessarily into this in depth, but there's already a lot of best practices in the beach path. There's already a lot of best practices in Huntington Beach as far as bike and pedestrian infrastructure, and we're just looking at trying to duplicate that and expand that into a network so it makes sense and people can actually navigate the city in all modes. So with that, I'll turn it back to Chow, who will talk about e-bike education.
We want to update the council on some efforts that's happening with e-bike education enforcement. You know, we know it's a hot topic right now, and what the efforts that we've found so far is that if there is a policy coming from the council that it's clear and that we enforce it, and we also have efforts where we want to recommend safe and future-focused bike infrastructure and signage to help regulate any e-bike paths or trails that would be recommended later on in the future. Education, we've got bike radios that are happening right now through the police department, so kudos to the police department for spearheading that. I hear Huntington Beach is just one of two cities that's doing it, so congratulations to our police department. Huntington Beach is also involved with stakeholder meetings through OCTA. So OCTA is spearheading a task force for e-bike, not only at the city level, but for the regional level, because this isn't just an HB problem. It is a regional issue that we are all trying to wrap our heads around. Every city's trying to deal with e-bikes right now, and we're looking to OCTA for guidance. They've gone ahead and printed material for us to start engaging the public. There's bike hangers, there's pamphlets, there's QR codes, there's bike safety awareness stickers, all types of promotional materials to help promote safety. We also recommend data collection. Right now, there is no accident data related to e-bikes at this time. It's not there. It's something that, it could be done through the police reporting system, but it has not been established citywide or anywhere throughout the state that we are aware of. So that will help with promoting legislation, fighting for legislation, because everything is data-driven, so that will be a recommendation as well. Also, regulation target enforcement, that's something that I know the police department in Huntington Beach is doing. They've got target enforcement over at the beach path to have people slow down. So we're doing a lot of efforts in Huntington Beach, and kudos to the police department. So the next steps is to, after this study session, is to brief the public about our draft recommendations, to share the survey results to them, and also bring back a draft mobility plan for council adoption. Before it goes to council, this plan will be circulated for comments so that we make sure we hear everyone's comments on this draft plan. And the plan will result in concept drawings as well as analysis, identifying where it's possible to construct corridors of the citywide network, and which areas have the greatest opportunity for improved safety. The plan will highlight areas of bike-ped network which have been looked at for feasibility, and the plan will build upon extensive public input and be utilized to leverage future grant funding. So that concludes our report tonight. We'll answer any questions at this time.
I have a question. The next public meeting, is that going to be in person or online as well?
We are anticipating virtual, because we anticipate there'll be more attendance if it's virtual, so that people can, you know, stay with their children or be at work and still chime in into the meeting.
And you said that would be in the fall?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor.
Yeah, congratulations, first of all. Public Works Director Vu, glad to see you get a much-deserved promotion. Just a couple of observations. So I recall last year Chief Para giving us some accident statistics related to e-bikes. I just can't remember what the date of that meeting was. And so one thing I would like to ask about, and I know we're going to talk about an e-bike ordinance later, is, you know, that process of gathering e-bike-specific statistics, because I agree with you that those are going to be very useful for us to have. And I actually was under the mistaken impression, obviously, that we had started collecting statistics on accidents that involved e-bikes specifically, but we can talk about that somewhere in the future. And then with respect to communication, I understand the process that you're going through for the mobility plan, but specifically pertaining to e-bikes, I do think that we need to have stakeholder meetings within the city of Huntington Beach, because just based on the interactions that I have with residents, a lot of the information is, you know, it takes time for this information to kind of filter out. And so I think that to the extent we can do some stakeholder meetings, especially when we have some concrete things to share with people, like, you know, what you're describing here on e-bike education and, you know, the discussion of, you know, enforcement and other types of regulatory measures that we're looking at adopting. I think that people will appreciate just being updated or informed on what's going on with respect to e-bikes. So thank you.
Chow, quick question. What was that you mentioned that us and one other city are doing with the police?
It's Laguna Niguel.
But what are they doing?
They're doing regulatory enforcement at the school level.
Got it. Okay.
That's it.
And then also, I'm assuming we'll have the different cost breakdowns on which option we want to choose on the different mobility plans?
We could cost it out, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Chow, for this great, I think, kind of tease as the final master plan comes forward, and this is a great, I think, making us eligible for grant funding, which is what a master plan generally does, and doesn't lock us into really any matter. I think the costing will come forward when the projects come forward, but this gives us a toolbox to say, here's how we can make bike and pedestrian movement in the city much safer, because right now we have an engineering problem with this. I did take a little note where you said we've got, we've got safe bike facilities on a lot of our arterials. We have bike facilities on a lot of our arterials. We have paint on the ground, which I don't believe makes a safe bike facility. I've seen too many people just on their phone starting to drift over into that bike lane on Warner. I mean, traffic generally moves at 50-plus miles an hour. You've got to take your life into your own hands to ride bikes on a lot of roads in our city, and I hope this goal will slowly but surely make our city a safer place to ride bikes, and it may not be, you know, we get a lot of emails from folks saying, we need a stoplight here, we need a signal here, because the intersection feels unsafe, right? It may not be unsafe. We may, we look at the traffic data, and no one has died, no one, there's been no car accidents, but there's a lot of close calls that we don't capture. I think that speaks a lot to bike and people walking and biking in this community. I think biking, for most part, of folks don't feel safe. Like, I want to ride my daughter to school a quarter-mile away, because when I drive there in the morning, because she's four, I can't walk her there, because her legs will stop working after the first hundred feet. I end up parking so far away that I still end up having to carry her. I'd love to ride my bike there. My wife does not want me riding a bike down Newland with my daughter in it, especially in the morning with school drop-off. So I think part of this should hopefully help as we design projects going forward, to have a plan that says when we take into account child safety, because you experience your city in a whole different way when you're walking or biking. You're not experiencing it in your four-ton metal box that's air-conditioned with your own music on. You experience the sounds, the sights, the smells. Actually, I found dinner tonight, walking. And I said, I got out and I smelled the food, and I'm like, where is that? And so you experience your city at a different, a different clip. And I'm hopeful that this master plan, which, again, eligible for grant funding, which is, there's so much money running downhill right now for making bike safety a higher priority in communities, but, you know, I think we can't talk about this without addressing vehicle violence, right? We had a horrible incident happen a couple of days ago. We have vehicles routinely, I think, not routinely, but occasionally crashing into folks on bikes, and I think that if we can create some sort of safe infrastructure, obviously putting parked cars between people and bikes is great, and K-Rail and all of that, but if we don't have funding for a certain project, I would love to see us be able to pre-engineer for it, that if we're going to, we leave this space when we're re-striping an arterial that says, okay, we can come back in the future with some sort of protective barrier. And I'm very confident, as a lot of other cities in the world have done, again, we're not the first city to decide we wanted to, that it would be good to have bike traffic, that if you build it, they will come. If you have safe, connected infrastructure, we can do that. And the only way we're going to decrease car traffic in the city is to give people a viable option to get around. I think our consultant brought up the point that it can take you 15 minutes to cross the street legally in some parts of the city. Beach Boulevard, I actually had a conversation with the California Secretary of Transportation about this issue, including Beach Boulevard and Pacific Coast Highway, with, we have these giant signalized freeways, for lack of a better term, running through our city, that if you're on one side, you, to legally cross Beach Boulevard, you've got to make a long walk to find a signal to get across an eight-lane highway. And the same thing with Pacific Coast Highway. We get a lot of emails from residents downtown that wonder where the crosswalks went, down in some of the higher-numbered streets, and so you see servers running across the street. So again, like, I think this is excellent, excellent work, and I'm excited to see the finalized plan. And obviously, you know, Mr. Shepherd's email earlier today showing how to get connectivity to our schools. I mean, I rode my bike to school for fourth and fifth grade, and it was great. Gave me, you know, autonomy, and it gave me, you know, a sense of my, you know, being able to have responsibility. But the flip side of that is, obviously, we need to make sure that our kids are safe and safe routes to schools. I don't think Huntington City is, City School District has implemented their safe routes to schools yet, but obviously, we want to make sure that we're, that the policy is there and that the engineering mandate is there from the city, that we're trying to make this safe for the community. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Counselor.
I, too, just wanted to say thank you. I know this has been a long time in coming, and I know it will continue to be a lot of work as we move forward. You know, I, too, think that it's really about safety, and, you know, a lot of it is really making people more comfortable as well. And I know, and maybe even making families or parents more comfortable, too. Speaking as one who doesn't like to, or hasn't encouraged my kids through the years to travel far throughout the city because of my concerns about getting safely from one side to the next. In fact, my, my son was going to start boxing over the summer, and I was like, well, maybe you can ride your bike. And we took a drive that day just to see, like, where was this going to be? And I was thinking that the Springdale enhancements that we did had gone all the way down to Edinger, which, of course, they did not. I think they started at Warner, and that's where the boxing is. And so essentially, it didn't help him at all, and it was just kind of a bummer for me. And I know we can't, you know, help everybody throughout the city, but it was that moment of, I would have encouraged him to go that way, but to have to get through so many major intersections, I didn't. And so then he had to wait for me to be able to bring him places, which is unfortunate. So it's these types of things and creating, as Mr. Shepherd said, the kind of that spine throughout the city through the years that I think is really important of better pedestrian and biking infrastructure. You know, I do think that people do feel more comfortable, as it says with this study, or the survey indicating that if there is something in between them and the cars, they're going to feel better, and they're more likely, as Councilmember Kelmick said, if you build it, they will come. A lot of people say, well, there's not that many people biking in different areas, or why do we build this if they're not there? They're not there, I think, because they don't feel safe or comfortable. And I believe that a lot more people would get out on their bikes and different mobility devices and out of their cars, and, you know, and we do talk about the challenge of traffic and congestion, and that is a way for us to hopefully move beyond that. If we get people, you know, cities grow. As the cities grow, this would be another opportunity for people to, if they felt safe, get on a bike or an e-bike or what have you. Also, you know, I know that our neighbor, Costa Mesa, has done a really great job of creating a lot of great biking infrastructure and looking at things kind of in different ways. I know they have a council that's been really pro creating that type of infrastructure. But I would love for us, and maybe we already have worked with the city of Costa Mesa as well, and we're regional, we talked about this regional piece, too, right? We're connected to them. Have we spoken with them or worked with them at all on what they've been doing?
I have not, but I am aware of their bike infrastructure. They're really greening it up, literally.
Yes, they are. And I know I drove down Garden Grove there as well, Westminster is a bit, so it's, you see it happening. And if we can really do that with all of the cities, imagine people would really be able to get around in a different way, and it is a regional opportunity and a regional challenge. Let's see. The safe routes to school, of course, is also really important. And again, like, if we could get, I know that the schools have worked on those, and they have those on file, but I don't feel like we actually work to make them robust where people still feel safe actually getting there outside of the neighborhoods. I know we're talking with the schools, though, always, about those safe routes to schools, and I appreciate that. Oh, one other thing. Also, with Costa Mesa, I know they have an active transportation committee. And I know recently we've kind of done away with a lot of our committees, but I think that citizen committees like that help to demonstrate where our priorities are, and also, there are a lot of folks who are on the ground here, literally, who I think would be really interested in participating, doing walks, doing rides. Of course, we want to incorporate the entire community, but I would, I would encourage our city to consider having some type of, you know, active transportation committee like that. I believe that we had one for biking specifically back in maybe 2013 or '14. I don't know how that went then, but I think there's maybe an opportunity now. I don't know if there's any comments on that, on, like, the value of something like that.
That's part of our engagement. They would be a major stakeholder as a subcommittee.
If we had that, yes. Okay. That would be great. Okay. Well, I appreciate everything that you've done, and one more thing on the mobility piece, which I think is separate from this, but the master plan. We're including vehicle mobility, as far as cars and things like that, within that as well, correct? Or is it just micro and bike mobility?
No, it's bike-ped.
Okay. Where do we look at vehicle mobility efforts? And the reason that I bring it up, so just to kind of front-load it, too, is, you know, as we move forward with electric vehicles and things like that, too, to encourage that type of use, I'm just thinking that that might, I don't know where that would show up in a master plan. I guess that's my question, is like vehicle charging and things like that. And maybe it's not here, but where, where might it show up?
Green infrastructure.
Great.
Green, like sustainability.
And you bring up my final thing, which was, I hope that we're looking at this through a sustainability lens. I know we haven't finished wrapping up our sustainability master plan yet, but I think that we should look at all of our planning through that lens, and I hope that that's done and we can vote that through soon, so that we can look at all of these types of planning processes through that lens as well. Thank you.
Anything else, members? Seeing nothing. Thank you so much for the presentation and all the hard work that you put into this presentation. Really appreciate it. Members going down to the agenda. Now we're going to closed session announcements. I have to announce, we're in a conference with labor negotiators, government code section Agency-designated representatives, Alzalinka, City Manager, Melanie Channing, Chief Negotiator. Also in attendance are Jose Rodriguez, Human Resources Manager, Teresa St. Peter, interim Director of Human Resources, Travis Haas. Director of Human Resources, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Michael Gates, City Attorney, Scott Habberly, Fire Chief, and Sunny Hahn, Chief Financial Officer. Employee Organization, the Huntington Beach Fire Fighters Association and Fire Management Association. Also, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, Alzalinka City Manager, Travis Hopkins, Assistant City Manager, Melanie Chaney, Chief Negotiator, Teresa St. Peter, interim Human Resources Director, Sunny Hahn, Chief Financial Officer, Eric Para, Police Chief, Jose Rodriguez, Human Resources Manager, Employee Organization, Huntington Beach Police Officers Association, HBPOA. Do I hear a motion and second to go to closed session?
A mayor, right here.
Yeah.
I have a update on tonight I just wanted to share with the city council.
Okay.
The HBFA and the FMA items will not be heard in closed session tonight. I just wanted to announce that.
Oh, great. Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion and second to go to closed session? Moved?
Second.
Second. We're now going to closed session.